I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. Councilor Ray will not be with us tonight. The first item on the agenda requiring action is public input, and we have two people that signed up. First will be Lee Gruber. She'll come up to the podium. Make sure you press the little button there so we can hear you.
Okay, there's the little white button. Is that good? Okay, thank you. Actually, I was hoping Fay would be called up first, but that's okay, I'll just wing it. I'm here on behalf of Tourism and the Arts and Cultural District, and want -- I had Callie Kennington print for all of you some reviews that were given on TripAdvisor, and I don't want to repeat those, but they should be in your packet of information. And I wanted to, once again, speak with total respect for all of you and for our town and its administration, but speak again to the problems that we encounter in the Big Ditch in particular. That should be our glowing attraction here in our historic downtown. And I know Mayor Ladner and all of you councilors are interested in this. I'm not against homeless people. I have great empathy for people who are on the streets, but we just have to figure out a way together to make that a safe, inviting place for people to be. We have to take back the ditch. That might be one way to think of it, just take it back as a community. And I will say that you have a $350,000 grant that's going to try to turn that visitor center parking lot into a place of beauty and inviting place, and we can jump off from there and go to the ditch and make it happen. So I just want to publicly lend my support to your efforts to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Fay McCamara.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I just wanted to come by and publicly thank the town for their support of Fiesta Latina. By all accounts, it was a very successful first year, and we will definitely be continuing it. We had sold-out activities surrounding the weekend, and a lot of people attended. And I did speak to a number of people from out of town who saw the advertising, and I wanted to thank the Arts and Cultural District for especially securing good rates for a lot of the businesses and entities in town in the edible Baja. A woman came up to me, found out that I was producing the event, and just said she wanted me to know that she had been seeing all about our wonderful community here in Silver City. And she had come to that event, said, "Well, this is a good time to come and check out the town," because she's thinking of relocating here. And then I had other people who were just here for tourism, for the event, and of course, the Western New Mexico University campus is looking so beautiful. Dr. Shepherd has done an outstanding job of making it inviting and a wonderful place to bring people and to introduce them to our community up there. And so I just wanted to thank people for their tourism efforts, and also echo what Lee said, that, you know, we're all putting a lot of effort and funds into bringing people to town, and then if they go downtown and, you know, have an unpleasant experience in the ditch, or being accosted, panhandling, that kind of thing, then it just kind of, you know, puts a damper on maybe the good that they've experienced here as well. So anyway, thank you for all your efforts, and thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is council comments. Councilor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I wanted to say is I enjoyed going to Fiesta Latina. The food was amazingly wonderful, and I ate probably more than I should have, and took stuff home for eating it on Sunday night. Demonstrations and presentations and the dancing was wonderful, the food was wonderful, great crowd of people, and wonderful artisans with some really beautiful items for sale. So I look forward to next year's Fiesta Latina, and I'm sure it'll be even bigger and better. But I have to say, the music every night was pretty fantastic, so kudos to you, Fay, and to Western for doing that. That's a great job. So last weekend, or just most recent, this past weekend, I went up to Albuquerque with Councilwoman Smith, the town clerk. There were other folks, the mayor was there, and also Alex Brown for the New Mexico Municipal League's policy committees in meetings. And we have five different policy committees, and it's the beginning of what we do as a municipal league with 107 municipalities that we have to look at what we did last year and brought forward to legislature, and what we need to adjust and change, and how things have changed for the upcoming year. So policy committees is where everybody reviews last year's resolutions, and then we determine, as in one of those policy committees, if there's new policies to be presented, or new resolutions to be presented, new wording policies to make them, or resolutions to make them more in line with our municipal policy statement. So it's just the beginning of a process that occurs all the way through to our annual meeting, which will be in mid-August this year, and then pretty much concludes with when the board of the New Mexico Municipal League looks at it and makes decisions on one of the top three priorities that they want staff to work on, although all things generally are priorities if they're germane to the upcoming legislature and to the call for the 30-day session that will be coming up in 2018. So it was a great meeting, there were lots of folks there, and a lot of input was heard from the different committees. So I just wanted to let you know that we've begun our process. And then I wanted to talk briefly about the aggressive begging, panhandling, and prohibitive solicitations. This is not, unfortunately, it's not something new to our town or to any town. So in 2010, May of 2010, former Mayor James Marshall and I co-sponsored an ordinance of 164, which was approved on prohibiting aggressive begging and how that's defined in prohibitive solicitations. And I wanted to mention real briefly that Albuquerque does have one going forward, but it is, let's just say it's unconstitutional in several aspects and has not yet passed, but ours did pass wholeheartedly in 2010, not just because of what was happening downtown, but what is still happening in other places in town as well, with folks coming up and not taking a polite no for an answer. So I just wanted to make folks to realize and make our folks just kind of reiterate that this ordinance does provide a means by which officers can remove an individual from an area and cite them for aggressive begging. It's very well outlined. But it does not, however, change the behavior of the person who's aggressively begging or soliciting. It just doesn't. There's no way to change their behavior, but it's something that if someone, I've had to do it, I've been approached and still am to this day in different areas of town, and not necessarily always downtown, but wherever I may be, and I have had to call and remind central dispatch that, you know, we have an aggressive begging ordinance, and I'm concerned about the person that is following me, and that I wanted to, I want the officers to know that there's a problem. But the ordinance that we did, like all laws, really requires that persons who are subjected to aggressive begging and solicitation, or businesses that have problems with that, actually call central dispatch. I have said before here, and I will say again, I did in May when we were doing this ordinance, that I will pull my phone out of my purse. I do that regularly when I'm walking around town, just so that I have it with me, and I will tell someone that if they don't leave me alone, I have on-speed dial central dispatch, or if I feel really threatened, that 911. But the only way to begin to really try to prevent, since we can't change their behavior, is to be able to use that ordinance and to be able to have people call. And there is no really other way to really, at this point, somehow, you know, have an officer on every block. We don't have enough manpower to do that. Unfortunately, the real problem is, is that there's an increasing incidence of these occurrences, not only in our town and across town, but across New Mexico, because of the dismantling of our state's mental health system that occurred by our governor. And it's a very slow rebuild after the good Samaritan came in, and they've now exited the state, but there's a slow rebuild of our system right now. So there is really, unfortunately, like many things, if someone is mentally ill and is in the process of doing the aggressive begging, and this ordinance doesn't change their behavior, putting them in jail overnight or doing something like that is not going to stop it either, because there is no recourse for officers right now to really turn someone in or to assist them with the mental health system the way it is. So I ask that folks really, if they can, if they feel up to it, to please call central dispatch, to please call if they are really in a bad position, to please call 911. But, I mean, there is a reason for that. The 911 is to get them there quickly, and they will come quickly. Our foot patrols, our bicycle, actually, bicycle patrols are able to get there fairly quickly downtown. I know that there's going to be a discussion about that, a presentation about that from, I think, the chief or law enforcement about what we're doing with that. But I do think that this time of year, especially when it gets warm, I just hope we can all work together and please call upon your legislators in the state to please help fix the mental health system in New Mexico, because it's desperately needed. And we have to all work together to make sure that we make downtown and everywhere in town a safe environment for everyone that lives here and everyone that visits here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Here's my final.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I returned yesterday from the National Association of Latino Eligité Officials Conference that was in Dallas. It was quite an interesting experience. The New Mexico delegation included councilors from Santa Fe, Las Cruces, Pittsburgh, myself, one mayor from northern New Mexico, and a state senator. So we were pretty well represented. We went to sessions on trying to engage millennials, which is something that we're always thinking about here in Silver City, as well as finding ways for elected officials to support the local news media a little bit more and make sure that the community supports you as well. So that's something I'm hoping to work on. I also participated in a community service project that I think will be something that can happen here in Silver City too, so I've already kind of contacted an organization to see how they feel about that, so hopefully we'll be working on that. The main focus, though, probably because we were in Texas, was immigration, and working with law enforcement to make sure that immigrants are safe as well as supported in the ways that they need to be. And it was really nice to be able to say that I was from a community that has already done that, and is working together with law enforcement and with the local government to make sure that everywhere in the community feels like they are a part of the community. So I just wanted to again thank Mr. Brown for allowing me to go to that conference. I really enjoyed it, and I hope to put some of what I learned to practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kamala. Councilor Lysnich, you ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start off by acknowledging that actually, we, I'll speak to you a little bit, but I'll also speak to the greater community, that there are three issues that were brought up by the TripAdvisor reviews. One was that even if we clean up the Big Ditch one day, overnight people can go down and break bottles and make it look not as beautiful as it looked 20 hours earlier. So we have an issue of really taking back the ditch and keeping it clean. Another issue is that we may or may not have a large homeless population, but we certainly have a seeming number of folks out on the streets. I've been recently reading about what it was like here in Silver City when Silver City was the place to go for people who were tubercular. And at that time, there actually were people on cots just out on the streets because they were sick. And I think that we have to recognize that we have a similar kind of issue now. We have people who either have drug abuse issues, they're sick, or they have mental health issues, they're sick. And we need to, as a society, work on that. I really want to echo what Councilor Bedison says about mental health help. When I was a visitor center volunteer, I worked with a gospel mission and worked up a little card to give visitors, and I will volunteer to work with Rebecca at the visitor center to do that again. And it was simply a thing that says, "If you are being aggressively panhandled," this is what the ordinance says, like you can't be followed, you can't be yelled at, you can't have the sidewalk blocked, you know, they can't stand in front of you at an ATM, and the dispatch number for people to call. And there was also a handout attached to it that says, "If you need help, go to the gospel mission." And so Randy Salars and I had worked on that together. I'll find my template, and I'll go and work at the visitor center again, so that that will be available to visitors, because maybe just feeling prepared might make them feel safer. And then I have two other things I want to speak about briefly. One is that in 2016, the New Mexico Legislature passed Senate Bill 270, and that bill granted local authorities and the State Transportation Commission the ability to pass resolutions or ordinances and designate certain paved roads as okay for off-highway vehicles. So off-highway vehicles are things that we sometimes call utility vehicles, or some folks see them as ATVs, but those weren't really included. I want to clarify for the public that Silver City has not done so, and therefore, driving an off-road vehicle on our paved streets is illegal. Last week I saw three driving on 180 on Alabama and on Little Walnut. That is illegal. Don't do it. And I also want to let the public know that the New Mexico Transportation Commission has not designated any highway, any state highway, in Grant County as usable for off-highway vehicles. So if you're tempted to drive on 15, 90, or 180, don't do it. It's not legal. So just as a hope for public education here, if you think that because the bill was passed that said that local governments could do it, it doesn't mean that it's done everywhere, and it is not yet done here in Silver City. And it certainly is not done at the state level. One more thing, a bit of a rant today. I want to remind the public that a notice of intent for ordinance 1259, which amends our business registration and licensing procedures in the town, will come up for approval next month. That's been carried by me. I had a lovely conversation with some folks from the Small Business Development Center last week again about this. And so please contact me if you have any questions. This ordinance really aims to clarify the obligations of businesses to register and license their business and make it more user-friendly. So for folks who are concerned that perhaps the council is not user-friendly with business, we're working on it, and I'm here to attest that, yes, we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the councilmen? I have a few comments, one on the Big Ditch. I'd like to express appreciation to the many groups who do go down there and clean up on a fairly regular basis. There's a constant battle keeping that area clean. Not only that, but every time we have a heavy rain, the three creeks that feed into the Big Ditch collect trash and garbage from upstream and deposit it into the Big Ditch. That happens every time we have a rain, so now we got to get more people to go down and clean it up. So again, it's not, I'm not saying we're where we need to be, but I do want to express appreciation to those who do work down there and try to keep it clean. I too enjoyed the Fiesta Latina, and look forward to it next year, and want to thank all of the volunteers who made that possible, and want to thank the sponsors who made it possible for some of those vendors to actually be there, and the university for all of the things that they did in making that a super special event. I'd like to remind everybody that we have the Fourth of July Parade coming up. It will be on July the 4th, and once again, that happens because of a lot of volunteers. I'd like to thank First American Bank for, I think, I don't know if they're the only ones, but I know that they contributed money to buy the fireworks, or helped to buy the fireworks. And last but not least, I want to express appreciation to our police department and to our fire department. Sometimes we take these units for granted, but during the past several weeks, there have been several instances where these public servants have put their lives on the line, have put themselves in harm's way. The police department, as they apprehended several dangerous individuals. The fire department, as they fought a dangerous fire. As a matter of fact, two firemen were injured in those events. So hats off, and I salute, these are some of the heroes of our community, and we need to let them know how much we appreciate what they do. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Do any of the councilors want to make any changes? The next item then is approval of the minutes of the June 13, 2017 regular meeting. It's good to have you back, Councilwoman Smith. Do I hear a motion?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of June 13, 2017.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Bedison?
There is. Second motion.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Byrne?
Mayor, councilman, I've got some reports from multiple department heads and James, but first I wanted to start by letting you know that we're getting close to the end of the 2017 fiscal year, and basically, we're going to end up in good shape, better than what I presented at the preliminary budget, so we're going to be fine next year, we're going to have a good start. We, one of our, you know, we rent out tents, the large tents, to different community events. Right after our last council meeting, there was an event held out in Georgetown at one of the churches. One of the 30-by-30 tents was stolen. I don't know that they, because they dragged it all over the place, I don't know if it was usable after they got it to their vehicle, but we were able to, we are going to replace that 30-by-30 tent with 20-by-40 tents, because these ones will fit in the streets better, especially downtown, so hopefully we can get more use out of them. And with that, first, I'd like to have Jamie Embick, the Community Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I'd like to give you an update on a comprehensive plan. So the draft has gone to the Steering Committee, they've done their edits. It was scheduled for the July 5 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, but due to an unexpected illness from the chair, they won't have a quorum to vote on it, so it will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 1st. But on the bright side of that, the mayor has spoken to a couple of people, and we may fill those vacancies on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So it's a little bit of a month setback, but we would really like to focus on the public input, so we're willing to wait a month. So I'd just like to give you an update on that. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Embick, about how many public meetings did you have already with the comprehensive plan? I know I attended about four.
Probably altogether about 12 so far.
Okay, but it's appropriate to have more public input out with this draft.
Yes, because now we have a product for them to review. The first meetings gave us the input, this is the product review.
Thank you so much for including the public so much in this process.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I'm next, the Fire Chief, about the fireworks and the fire hazards this summer.
Mayor, councilmembers, as you stated, the Fourth of July holiday is quickly approaching. So first, I'd like to state that with Alex's permission, the fire department will be setting up the 30-by-30 tent on the front lawn of the fire department. In years past, we've had large crowds out to watch the Fourth of July Parade, and it's just intensely hot. So we're going to set the tents up, provide seating for the public, just as public service, and hopefully it'll alleviate some strain. But that being said, Fourth of July brings upon us fireworks every year. Sales are allowed to start Friday the 20th, excuse me, Friday the 30th. They sell through July 4th. And while we've had early onset monsoons somewhat, and the humidity level has gone up, I've been monitoring it, in the past 24 hours, the lowest our humidity's been's 14%, which is good for our area. That doesn't make up for the, you know, mid-to-high 90-degree temperatures we've had, plus the rain, which allowed our grasslands to grow quite wild last year. So while we do not ban fireworks as per state statute, I ask that the citizens of the town exercise caution and use fireworks judiciously. If they're going to use them, if they have to use them, please keep them to a barren or paved area, have an extinguishment method on hand. It's been several years since we've actually had a fire start from fireworks, and I'd like to keep that track record. So just as a public service tonight, I wanted to bring it to the attention of the public that while it's been wet and raining, it will still burn. So that's my report for you. Do you have any questions?
Councilor Bedison?
Can you just reiterate the purchase and use, because we have, that's how we restrict them as in the sales and use of fireworks. It's not all year round?
Yes, for the Fourth of July holiday, grand and aerial fireworks can be sold in the city limits from July 30th, I mean, June 30th to July 4th, only between the hours of 9:00 and 10:00 p.m. And that's the only time in which they can be ignited, except for weekend nights, where they're allowed to be ignited up to midnight. So that day is fast approaching, that's Friday. Tents are expected to be erected tomorrow morning. I'll be doing inspections and making sure that they have a safe setup, but past that, sales should begin on the 30th.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? So vendors can sell from the 30th through the 4th, right?
Yes, sir.
Is there a window that fireworks can be detonated by the public?
The same timeframe in the town limits, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Police Chief Ed. He's going to make Efrain Ganas Bike Patrol.
Councilman, dear member and citizens, I appreciate you for inviting me for this presentation of Bike Patrol. Two years ago, myself and now Sergeant Woods, we went to training Two years ago, myself and now Sergeant Woods, we went to training at Scottsdale and started getting our certification with Bike Patrol. Since then, we've been patrolling the downtown area and also certain areas in the community where we see a rise number of crime, like burglaries, et cetera. It comes directly down from our administration, this is the areas. Since my return to Bike Patrol this year, right now, I'm doing about six hours per week in the downtown area. My main area is bouled, side streets, I ride along Hudson Street and try to be visible to the public, and also hit the Big Ditch area, which's Main Street, and try to be visible to citizens walking. So I try to vary my hours, sometimes do from 2:00 to 4:00, sometimes I'll come in later in the evening, and just to vary it up, so people don't get my schedule down in there, and be present, talk to the community members, see if they have any problems or issues, and also, if I do see any violations, take enforcement on those violations, like drinking in public, or littering, or any type like that, so, you know, just try to stay visible in the area. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next one is James. Oh, now he wants to talk. Okay.
I want him to talk.
Hello, Officer Conas, he's a great officer, really enjoying. He's gone through a pretty hard time, and he's bounced back, and doing great. Mayor, City Council, thank you for giving me an opportunity to do a little presentation. Want to cover a couple of subjects. First one, I'm going to dispose of rather quickly, which is the county is fixing to pass their ordinance for allowing ATBs on their roadways, that are governed by them. They don't govern the roadways within the city, we do. Within the jurisdictional boundaries of Town of Silver City, it's still illegal. If you get caught, you're going to get cited, and there's going to be a fairly heavy fine assessed to them. So, if you're coming from Santa Clara, and you think that you can come into the city limits, go 32nd Street bypass, and then go up, kind of south those, and get caught on that 32nd Street bypass, you're gonna get cited. So stay out of city limits with those ATBs and ETVs. As for the homelessness and panhandling issue continue to be an issue for our community. Sometimes we have more in our town during the spring, summer, fall, sometimes we don't. Right now, we're estimated about 20 people in this town, but it changes, we have those flow through and head out of town. Now, the one thought today that I had, and it's open to discussion as well, and I'm just gonna make the comment, sometimes I'm born. We have individuals that complain about the panhandling that happens, yet we also hope those individuals to see the need to give money. Perfectly their right to do so. So it's a balance between those who do not wish to have panhandling in our community, and those that have no issue with it. So it might be a point of doing a survey, how many people are actually concerned with panhandling. Now I'm gonna go into panhandling. As stated by the council, aggressive panhandling requires, if we cite an individual, aggressive panhandling requires specific violations of that ordinance. If a person is standing on the corner, or sitting on a bench, and asks for money, and they say thank you, have a nice day, when you refuse, that's not a violation, don't call us. If you have an individual who, as stated, pursues you, or becomes belligerent, give us a call, we'll deal with that individual. But also, at the same time, remember, we're not there. So we need you to participate in giving of a statement, appearing in court when we cite this individual, and or file a complaint against them as a witness. We cannot be a witness. There's a misconception that law enforcement can act upon things that is outside our presence. We cannot, with a few exceptions. This is not one of those exceptions. So we need the community to participate, so we can impact these aggressive panhandlers, not the regular panhandlers. If they're sitting out at Walmart with a sign, not up there reading their sign, stepping in traffic, just sitting there, or somebody stops at a red light, offers money to them, they come up and take that money, that's not a violation. However, if they do stop and interfere with the flow of traffic on a green line, or interfere with somebody, a panhandler is in the medium, that's a violation itself, because it's a safety issue. So we need the people to also understand and educate themselves as to what actually is a violation of the aggressive panhandling ordinance. What we'll do is, we'll allow the town to, again, put it on their website, so it can be rid of. Panhandling is not against the law, it's a constitutionally protected practice. Homelessness is not a crime. We continue to have issues with homeless. What is a crime or a violation of ordinance can be where they are camping. I talked to code enforcement today, and asked them, how many complaints have they had on homeless camping since July 1st? Julie with code enforcement said there's approximately 15 cases that they've handled. So they're constantly impacting that. When we had to step in, re-impact that, that it's a violation of any ordinance or state statute. That's unlawful for somebody sleeping in a park. I was talking to Officer Conas today, and he, on one of his patrols, ran into several individuals down in, excuse me, the Big Ditch, that had got a complaint on from a citizen. All they were doing was sitting there on the bench, no alcohol, no wear shoes, they're just sitting there. It's not illegal. There's a perception of, well, a number of people, if they don't dress like me, and I'm gonna be blasted on this, it's okay. They don't dress like me, then that makes me nervous. Let's be a little more congenial, not everybody is like us. There are those that choose to be homeless. Take that one step further, how many people in this town that are homeless by choice and because of mental illness? What is the community doing to step up to deal with those issues? We cannot rest out of this issue. There has to be a community coordinated effort to deal with this. And law enforcement, if there's a violation, yes, we can cite, we can put them in the system. We had an individual, there was a constant issue in the downtown area. We finally were able to get him on a phone, which now kicks it up to a higher court, which will deal with him and determine what's the best possible place for him. Magistrate Court, no limit, municipal court, obviously, at the same time. So we get back to what is beneficial for our community, and how do we deal with these individuals? One of the things that we've had discussions on of late is also taking an opportunity to be proactive, or looking at reactive measures to, as law enforcement, with individuals coming in and doing training, that are prepared to deal with mental health crisis at the time. But as a community, we should be having a handshake with mental health professionals that come out into our community, even with a law enforcement officer who is plainclothes, and make contact with these people, and have conversations with these people, and see what their needs are, and then try and deal with those needs. I've researched throughout the entire country and taken a look at some of the things that are working in other areas, cost money. As an example, Utah passed a tax just for the specific purpose of dealing with homeless, and providing housing. This time, we had a lot of complaints, we had people complaining about this. Now let's be proactive and take an approach, how do we rectify this? How do we, without relying on law enforcement the entire time, to deal with these issues, to step up? Any questions?
Thank you, Julie.
Now, James is going to give a report. Police getting ready, I just want to let you know that Bethel, the company that we were working with on the city property up there by the old Hill Crest, did get the credits, so they will start moving forward on development of the actual project.
Mayor, Council, I have several pieces of my report tonight, and I really wanted to highlight a couple of things to start off with. The first is, the YCC Trail Group went in and did an amazing heavy lift under, behind the visitor center to, under the Broadway Bridge, and it loops back around and to a lower trail that heads back north to the large pedestrian bridge that crosses the Big Ditch. John Bjornstad slash GB is here with some of the crew, and I'd like to give him a moment to be introduced and introduce some of the crew.
Do we have to? Okay. You're good. Good evening, Council and Mayor, my name's John Bjornstad, and I'm the supervisor for the Aldo Charter Schools Trail Crew. This is Dave Chandler, he does a lot of the...
Coordination?
Coordination, yes, thank you. And these two gentlemen worked with us this summer, Nathaniel's been with me for two semesters on the Friday Crew, and also worked summer with YCC both summers, Nathaniel Woodruff and Caleb Lambert, both summers, down there on that Big Ditch Trail. And I would love to, I'd love to see folks partake in that, it ended up being a beautiful trail. Underneath the bridge, we have graded it and sloped it quite a bit, there were homeless people living there when we started this project, and for the first week, they persisted, they were very friendly and appreciative of us, and ultimately moved on and started keeping the place cleaner. The trail, as it comes down under the bridge and turns back up the creek, runs along the stream, and it does afford a person a real immersion in the little wilderness down there. As a former Wilderness Crew member for the Forest Service, it's really an indulgent experience to have the birds and the stream, and just since the flood yesterday, the creek's already cleaned up, the water's clear again, and, you know, I was just down there for lunch checking it out, to see how the erosion and whatnot is holding up. So as a crew, we put about, I think a little over 100 tons of rock, and recycled concrete down there to build the retaining walls and the strip wall that supports the tread, and probably around 100 yards, 150 yards of trail this year, about three to five feet wide, with the opportunity to go on south in the future, down to San Vicente, and also, I think, to build some ramps down to the water and some stairways, which will make public access and public safety and cleanup a lot more accessible. And I'm pretty excited about that, we left some spaces open where we could do that, that, where the trees would kind of protect the landing going down to the lower level of the water. And I think it's, I think, based on what I saw with the homeless people, they respected it. I think we'll have to claim it as a community and utilize it, I think the parks will probably need to do a little cleanup, and maybe the public too, but I think that we have the beginning of a great natural experience and a great system. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Alex, for your support. James, D'Amesso was credible, and Robert is together, thank them very much for me, really appreciate that.
Any questions? Can I say anything?
Jamie, this isn't a question, this is a comment. I got to hang out a bit and watch everyone hauling those rocks around. I was really impressed, and tried to thank every person that I ran across for the work that they're doing. And you are really right, the way to really keep that trail and make it beautiful is to use it. So I haven't yet walked it all, so that's part of the thing that I will have to do in the coming week, is to go walk that trail. So I just want to acknowledge what a great gift you have given to our community. Thank you all.
Any other comments? I'd like to make a comment, I did go down there, and it's really great, and it's a great place to walk, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing all of you down there. Have a good evening.
Mr. Motion?
Thank you all. Additionally, you'll notice if you go down there soon, when you enter under the bridge, it's quite unsightly. There is some horrific graffiti that's disgusting. So, Mr. Brown and I, the Chief of Police, Fire Chief, another community group, have all been brainstorming this last week on how do we use that opportunity that's been taken advantage of at this point, and clean it up and make it where we want our visitors to, to go down there and not be insulted. So, we're going to work on that, and I'm just not ready to give quite the detail yet, it's a little early, but we'll get that graffiti cleaned up, and hopefully, in a way that it doesn't come back. So shortly, or right at the end of the YCC Trail Project, Mr. Shelley came in and did an Eagle Scout project up in the visitor's center, all of the plant beds, more specifically to the south. They pulled weeds, they removed a whole bunch of elm, little saplings that were growing up all over and in the bushes, trimmed up some of the bushes, they refreshed the mulch beds with five cubic yards of mulch, and I believe there was close to 50 people that actually spent a couple of hours doing that project, and it really came out very nice, and we're appreciative of Mr. Shelley and his project supporting the community. Quickly, I wanted to report that the waterworks building project is done. The abatement lead, asbestos, and other biological matters has been resolved, tested, approved. We're finalizing some of the paperwork that has to follow all of these things, so at some point, we'll be able to pursue the use for that building. Many of you might have noticed, and I've got several phone calls and concerns about the plywood on 300 South or North Board. The Mayor has asked that we look at the ordinance again involving the downtown vacant buildings. So, we took many of the issues that we hear from different people that occupy our downtown, be it businesses, visitors, we reconciled them to the ordinance that we have, and found out that the ordinance is actually not resolving these specific issues that we're presented with. Some of those issues are very cosmetic. They're, at some point, the council... actually not resolving these specific issues that were presented with. Some of those issues are very cosmetic. They're, at some point, the council will have to decide, how do we regulate ugly? And how do you regulate ugly in a way that's not, um, taking advantage of some people that might not have the capacity to, to rectify the situation? So I have a list of several complaints that I have heard, and we're now looking at the ordinance reconciling it, trying to come up with an ordinance that first and foremost produces a safe downtown experience. And the plywood on 300, it was a safety issue. That glass was broken. It had a immediate threat to the public that it could shatter and fall into the sidewalk and harm somebody, so that was resolved. So now we need to figure out a way that we can prevent the building from getting there. That is also one of the buildings that has distant ownership. That creates a major problem when we're trying to identify and, and resolve solutions, or resolve issues. We can resolve solutions. Next, I wanted to discuss the, with the new budget year, the, the mayor has asked, and Mr. Brown has approved, that we re-initiate the Welcome to Silver City sign project and do it in, in line with what you had all discussed previously, considering all of the input that was provided. So this, this paper will be posted on the website tomorrow, hopefully, or very soon, that gives some guidance, that, and I'll just, they're very simple. I don't want to impact anybody's creativity or what ideas they might have by my, my guidance. So the, remember, it's a highway sign. People are going by at forty-five to fifty-five miles an hour, depending on what location it's at. It's very hard to read small lettering at those speeds, nor do you want people reading the sign at those speeds and not driving. We would like to see signs that represent Silver City's rich history, culture, and friendly people. A monument style is much more desirable than a billboard. We may be able to apply lighting it for night, compatible with native landscapes and plantings, therefore, we're not creating another maintenance issue that burdens an already very busy, um, staff. The wording such as "Welcome to Silver City," "Welcome to Historic Silver City" supports the goals of the project. The contact information, if you have ideas, you can submit them via email to jimbic@silvercitymail.com. You can bring them to the Town Hall Annex at 1203 North Hudson. That's the Washington Federal Period Building, at the second floor. If you, you can submit them on paper, you can submit them on digital media. We will not return the media, and any designs, materials that we are provided will become the property of the town with the rights to use them if the council so chooses their design. The, you can submit from any time. Deadline will be July 31st. So after July 31st, the council will then reconsider the options that the community has presented and make one or more decisions. And Mr. Brown promised you that we would look at the park rules for Goff Park. Mr. Penya and Jesus from Parks and I have met, we've discussed them, and I got their side today. I will comment back and see if we need to have any more discussion, and it'll, it'll go to Mr. Brown as quickly as we possibly can. And with that, we're standing for questions.
Councilman Madison?
So, um, Mr. Marshall, are we gonna make sure that this sort of information is published at least once on the Daily Press or other local papers? I mean, so that people know, like, there's that town column? If we could put that, that they could find out more by going to the website?
This one?
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
And, and of course, when we get around to knowing what we're doing with, we have everything set for Goff Park, that should be, you know, it's in written form so that everybody knows, and it's available on the website.
It, it is actually part of the park rules, and on the permit that they're given that says they're authorized to reserve the park and use it for their purpose, those rules are, are part of that paper.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I want to thank Mr. Marshall for a number of things that he's done. Uh, we have a very large population of tourists, visitors, community members who like to get out in hype around our area. We have a lot of different trails, and, um, Mr. Marshall has put together a Trail Committee of people who are interested in improving our trail system. We now have, thanks to Mr. Brown and Mr. Marshall, we have a Trails Coordinator that will be working with this group. So I appreciate all of those efforts. Next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, Councilman Madison, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I move for a short break.
Okay, yeah, do I hear you in a second?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm calling our meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is new business. Uh, item 11A is the approval slash disapproval of pawnbroker bond. Principal DK Rockin LLC, DBA, DK's Gun and Pawn, 1800 Highway 180 East, uh, Street C, Silver City, New Mexico. Bond amount $5,000. Mr. Don Klein, you want to make your presentation, please?
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, oh, I think it is. Can you hear me now? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for making room for me on your agenda this evening. My name is Don Klein, and, uh, I'm here seeking approval of the, of a surety bond to, uh, open a pawn shop and retail sale store, which, incidentally, would include selling firearms at 1800 Highway 180 East.
Any questions, um, from Mr. Klein? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion? Councilor Connor?
I want to approve of Pawn Broker Bond Principal DK Rockin LLC, DBA, DK's Gun and Pawn, 1800 Highway 180 East, Street C, Silver City, New Mexico, bond amount $5,000.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second? Councilwoman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, second the motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
No.
Are there any questions or comments from the general public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item 11B is the approval slash disapproval of a public celebration permit application and waiver of NMSA 1978, Section 60-6B-10, for alcohol sales near a church or school for the Clay Festival's Farm-to-Table Fundraiser Event to be held on July the 2nd, 2017, with alcohol service from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Volunteer Center, 501 East 13th Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder information, Precept Wine LLC, DBA, Bruitt Winery, License Number 60029, 8400 Pan American Freeway, Northeast Albuquerque, NM 87113. Lee Grover, I think you're gonna present this, right?
You just presented it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Um, I'm here to represent the Arts and Cultural District, which is presenting the six annual Silver City Clay Festival, scheduled from July 22nd to the 30th. Uh, we're going to hold a Farm-to-Table fundraising event at the Volunteer Center, and we're seeking, uh, a public celebration permit. Uh, the company, Gruet, from, uh, New Mexico, winemakers famous around the world now, have finally agreed to come to Silver City and to, uh, play a role in this event. So it's a huge deal, and I seek the public ce-, public celebration permit to do this.
Any questions? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Grover, we had information in a packet, but perhaps the public doesn't have information about what, uh, Farm-to-Table Celebration is going to entail. Could you say a little bit about that, please?
Absolutely. It's a, it's a wonderful event, and what, what you do in a Farm-to-Table event is you gather together your local farmers and, uh, producers of lamb or beef, uh, eggs, et cetera, and you use those, you bought, you purchase from the local farmers. So you're helping to support the local farming industry. Then what, what we have done is created a menu that's based upon New Mexican and Oaxacan cuisine, and we took those menu items to our local chefs and asked many of them to produce what we will be serving at the dinner. So you have local farmers producing the produce and the, and the meats, and, uh, local chefs producing the recipes. And then best of all is we have the young people from the Rooted Program at the Volunteer Center, and the J Junior Probation Kids will be serving the meal. Uh, not the alcohol, but the meal. And, uh, we're just so proud of being able to do something like this and pull it together. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I hear a motion? Councilor Connor?
Post-celebration permit application and waiver of NMSA 1978, Section 60-6B-10, for alcohol sales near a church or school for the Clay Festival's Farm-to-Table Fundraiser Event to be held on July 22nd, 2017, with alcohol service from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Volunteer Center, 501 East 13th Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder information, Precept Wine LLC, DBA, Gruet Winery, License Number 60029, 8400 Pan American Freeway, Northeast Albuquerque, New Mexico, 87113.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Councilman Madison?
Mr. Mayor, second the motion as stated.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my understanding is that there is a search that is within a certain distance of this. Have they approved, or have they submitted a letter of approval or saying it's okay with them?
Yes.
Yes, they have. I just want to make sure that that's public.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Any, um, questions or comments from the general public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 11C, the approval slash disapproval of bid number 16/17-6, Janitorial Services. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, Councilor, um, the town received two bids for the, uh, for bid 16/17-6 Janitorial Services, one from Complete Care Cleaning Services, and the other from New Mexico Cleaning and Janitorial Services. It's staff's recommendation to do a multi-award, thereby, uh, giving each one of the, uh, bidders, uh, the facilities that they bid the lowest on. So, um, it's staff's recommendation to award the, to Complete Care Cleaning, the Visitor Center for $450 a month, Municipal Court for $450 a month, City Hall Annex for $900 a month, uh, the fuel station for $200 a month, uh, for a total of $24,000, I mean, $2,000 a month, or $24,000 a year, plus gross seats taxes for all of these. Uh, New Mexico Cleaning Service, New Mexico Cleaning and Janitorial Services, uh, to award City Hall for $625, the Police Department for $550, uh, the Hub Restrooms for $325, for $1,500 a month, or $18,000 a year, plus gross seats taxes.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion? Councilman Madison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of bid number 16/17-6 Janitorial Services. Through staff recommendation, has already entered into the record.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? Councilwoman Smith?
Uh, second the motion.
Okay, I think you, did we jump the gun here?
No.
Okay. Um, any discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Councilman Madison? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? This meeting is adjourned.